I will call this meeting to order and ask that we stand for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask if anyone has a pecuniary interest to disclose it now or at the time. I would ask that if there's anything to raise and report from our in-camera session.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. There is one matter to report. That is that on, at its meeting of July 5th, 2017, County Council did ratify a collective agreement, a new collective agreement with uniform local 302 pretending to employees employed at Marshall-Gallen Manor.
Thank you. And at this time, before I call on a motion for the delegations, I'd like to just bring everyone's attention that Mr. Dave Pozliff, our current manager of Planning Development Services, retiring. This will be his last time council meet before he leaves on Friday, September the 15th. So he's proudly served the county for 29 years, and we wish him all the best in his retirement for Dave Pozliff. And also, I'd like to extend a welcome to Ben Puzlav as our incoming manager for Planning and Development. I believe he started today, and he's joined us from Planning and Middlesex Center. And so we welcome him, and we'll introduce again at the next meeting. With that, I'd like to have a motion to have the delegation come within the rail. And this is for the St. John's Ambulance Therapy Dogs. Moved by Counselor Gillis, second by Counselor McDougal. All in favor of that? That is carried. So I would like you to come forward.
Warden Weaver, members of Lampton County Council, good morning. I'm Bill Bowden, according to St. John Ambulance, Sarnia-Lampton Therapy Dog Act Number 1094. We're pleased to be here today to share the recognition of our 20th anniversary. We provide therapy dog service in the city of Sarnia in Lampton County. St. John Ambulance is the oldest charitable organization in the world founded almost 1,000 years ago. I'm sure you are aware of St. John Ambulance. Our medical first responders rather than high school football and hockey. They often have community parades and celebrations. We taught them a first aid course in St. John Ambulance, or became a grad by the babysitting course. We've been in community a long time. The St. John Ambulance Therapy Dog Program is a local initiative that began in Peterborough, Ontario in 1992. It is a community-based service offering St. John Ambulance volunteers and their pet dogs to the public. Sarnia-Lampton Therapy Dogs came into being in September 1997. Since that time, the volunteers and their dogs have been actively visiting nursing and retirement homes, which are deemed our core programs. At present, the 48 handlers and 49 dogs visit 14 nursing homes across the county, eight primary and secondary schools, a hospice, two all-timer day programs, Blue Water Health, two rebound programs, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Pathways Health Center, and a growing list of community living homes. Additionally, annual events such as the Girl Guide River Crossing and Swap Meet, the Mental Wellness Conference of Rebound, the Groups Dog Days are attended. And this October 1st, our unit is attending for the first time Barktoberfest at the Pineary in Grand Bend. During 2016, our therapy dog teams volunteered and performed over 1,300 visits with our dogs. This year, we are on track to surpass that mark, and with fewer teams. This is possible with a passionate and dedicated membership. A constant aim for this not-for-profit program is development within Sarnia and Lampton County. The dogs you see here today are tested, evaluated, and certified to be of sound temperament and to show the therapeutic qualities foremost needed in therapy dogs. Not to mention, they possess the magic of dog therapy. The counselors this morning that visited the dogs before our session started just give a thought like, how was your stress level before and after you visited with the dogs? You experienced the magic, part of the magic. Our handlers must successfully submit to a vulnerable sector police record check. All of our dogs have their vaccinations up to date and submit annual veterinarian checks. Handlers and dogs were the St. John Ambulance Therapy Dog Unit for. St. John Ambulance Sarnia-Lampton Therapy Dog Unit would like to present Warden member and members of the council with a plaque in recognition and celebration of our 20th anniversary in our communities. We also have some magazines and brochures for you as well that we'll pass out. And thanks for taking the time today to visit with us.
On behalf of County Council, I want to congratulate you and all your volunteers on 20 years and extend a sincere thank you to what you do for the community and those places that you visit with the therapy dogs. Good work and continue on for another 20 years. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Counselor Napper.
Well, thank you very much. I'd very remiss, Mr. Warden, if I didn't get up and say thank you too. Lexi, the big dog that was having a sleep, and my wife are pretty good friends over at Meterview. And if you go in there any given day, they'll pull a chair up to her wheelchair, next to the wheelchair. He'll sit in the chair, look at her eyes, then down to her candy dish. So he's a bit of a moocher. But on behalf of a person that has a residence in here, thank you very much for what you do. You can see the folks just light right up, and every day, somebody's bringing dogs in there. And it's a big lift to them, and they all look forward to it. And thank you very much. It's a good service.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on, item number eight is the minutes of our open and closed session from July 5th and August 2nd, the special council meeting. Moved by Counselor McDougal, second by Deputy Warden McCharles. Any questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Correspondents? We have a thank you card from Mr. Malley. And there's items below that not requiring a motion. Do we want to put both of those, receive those? Moved by Counselor Case, second by Counselor Gillis. So that's the item A and 10, A, B, C, and D with those minutes. Counselor Broad.
Thanks, Warden Weaver. I just had a question on the Woodlands Hearing Board meeting. What's the rationale for giving the individual three years to pay for it?
Who would like to speak to that? Mr. Cole? Well, who was at the board meeting that was? Counselor McDougal?
I could take a stab at this because I was at the board meeting. I believe that we actually had a robust discussion about the level of remuneration provided to the county from the applicant for the hearing. But I think really it was the magnitude of the monies that were going to be provided and that it was agreed that it would be over a three-year period. I don't think, I don't know, Steve, if you have anything else to offer to that?
Counselor Arnold?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Warden and members of County Council, just in answering the question, that is something that's fairly standard. I think that was a staff recommendation over three years, and we've done that on a number of them, Mr. Broad. And that's why it was just something that was in there already during the report. It wasn't something that was negotiated with the committee.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up? Counselor Broad?
Yeah, just a little bit of follow-up. I just really have a hard time understanding. This individual just paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for this farm, and now he can't afford the $14,000. We have to put under payments. That just makes no sense to me whatsoever. Thank you.
Okay, noted. Any other questions on those reports? Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I just comment in regards to the Lampton County Creative Committee. And I was quite distressed when I read that there's a thinking on the committee that they're not accountable to County Council. And when it talks about being at arm's length, I remember being here when it was established. It was established with a $75,000 donation from the county to try and help out some of the smaller cultural venues throughout the county. And the reason why it was to be at arm's length was so that we would not influence who received the money. It was never intended, at least not on my vote, to be at arm's length that they weren't accountable to the county as far as the terms of reference, the people that sat on it, and those types of things. So I was very surprised to see it as a theme throughout a couple of sets of minutes that, you know, we're at arm's length from the county, and we're not accountable essentially to the County Council, and yet they are very much so. They are in existence only by the whim of this council. And the money that was allocated was done strictly at the whim of this council, renewed on a yearly basis through the budget process if this council wants it to continue. And I believe that one of the issues that we had was in regards to the Suncor funding. And this is where some of the controversy came to be. Well, that was something that was received. There needs to be a change to the terms of reference to be approved here on the county floor, in my humble opinion, on how things are received and distributed and that kind of stuff, if there's a change. And to me, that committee has the obligation to come back here with a recommendation on how to move forward with those types of instances, not to be off on their own with their hand up saying, stay away from us. So anyways, Mr. Warden, just a comment, because I realize it says right here that these aren't to vote on, which for some strange reason I would think they should be, but that's all right. There's been a decision made, I assume through your chair, and I respect that. But that's my two cents. I sat here, and I think if you go back into the motion book, you'll find I probably helped make the motion to have the thing established so many years ago. And that was my intention. It was never my intention that they operate without any regard to this council.
Counselor Case?
Yes, Mr. Warden, through you. Again, we had the issue back with the donation that came from Suncor and the other wind turbine organization. I'm sorry, their name escapes me, Nextera. We did take care of that. I think there was some housekeeping performed. I mean, we were very disappointed with it, my municipality, when that happened. But we did take care of that particular item and that issue where there would be communication back to council. Maybe Mr. Van Horn can bring everybody up to speed. I remember we did deal with that issue so that that would not happen again, from what my memory is telling me, to make sure that doesn't happen. And it was never my intention for the organization, and I do sit on it, that we're arm's length. I mean, we do make decisions based on applications. There's a process, a very thorough process that has to be gone through. I mean, so I don't feel that we're turning away from County Council by any means. I think the County Council is still a part of this whole thing, and that's my way of looking at it, and I guess my recollection of what we've done. But as far as the housekeeping piece, that was done. I remember that. So we don't run into another situation like that where we have a big company wanting to make a large donation and County Council is surprised by it when they hear about it through the media. Because my municipality was very much against those dollars at that time, as you remember, Mr. Warden, and others were as well. So I think that's been looked after, not to beat a dead horse to death, but I do think that we've taken care of that, and we put that piece aside. And it's never been my intention, as somebody that sits on that committee, to do anything that would surprise County Council later on. I mean, it is an organization that, there's a process attached to it. And I think they're looking at even maybe firming that up a little bit more in some of the meetings we've had. But I, through you, Mr. Warden, maybe to Mr. Van Horn or somebody, I could ask maybe for some clarification to help Mr. Arnold up perhaps.
Anything further?
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I'm sorry, I don't have the wording right in front of me here. But when we, when it was discussed at County Council, there was a motion passed with respect to gifts or grants of the nature of the Suncor piece coming to County Council for approval. I think the attempt was made to incorporate that into how the committee operates. And it was certainly the direction of council that they would have to follow anyways, given that the money comes from council.
Any other comments? Counselor Arnold?
Just two quick comments. And I refer to the minutes from January 23rd, 2017. It talks about, and this was a surprise to me when I read this. The initial contact with Suncor occurred when staff approached them in 2015 about being a sponsor of the Beaverbrook exhibit. Suncor in that time declined the opportunity to participate in the sponsorship, but said they would remain open to other opportunities in the future. I did not realize that part of the mandate of staff through this committee was to go out and solicit donations. And that's where I think we're missing the terms of reference for me. And I think that that would be good for clarity to see what the terms of reference of this council had approved for that grouping, including the staff that sits there. And the other thing, when I look at motion number three, it talks, whereas the Creative Committee, County Committee, was struck to be independent of council, and whereas County of Lampton has not had previous restrictions on receipt of cash donations, blah, blah, blah. So that comes back to my point that we need to ensure that everyone around here is comfortable with the terms of reference for the committee and how it operates. And I think that's my main point, Mr. Warden. And I would suggest that we have a report brought back here to our morning committee, and it can go through the committee process and have that discussion made.
Okay. Are you making that a motion to ask? I guess there's a motion on the table to receive these reports, so I would deal with that.
I'll do it after.
Do it after. Counselor McDougal?
Yes, Warden Weaver, members of County Council, to the issue of Counselor Arnold's comment that he had never understood that staff would be out soliciting donations. I think the original, well, I know the original contact was for the solicitation of sponsor monies for the Beaverbrook exhibit, which was a huge exhibit that came to town. And it actually occurred through the public art gallery. And across all of our portfolio of long-term care homes and some of our museum and other cultural facilities, there has always been a reaching out for sponsorship dollars to help augment what we do on the tax base alone, in addition to longstanding discussions about whether or not admissions should be charged at various facilities, et cetera. Then back through the committee, the committee had been structured through the approval of the cultural plan to have robust representation from County Council because the grant program was going to be allocating monies into the four separate quadrants, so to speak, as we have arranged them to be with the county. So I don't believe that the independence, if I could speak for the committee, that this independence was based on them not believing ever that they weren't accountable to the county or to County Council, rather that they were operating with very robust representation from each of the quadrants and the warden of the day. So, you know, I guess I would suggest that if there was going to be a report, the report should look at maybe the donations that are made right across to all of our facilities because we do receive them in all of our facilities. And I remember at the committee level, a little bit of discussion about that, that they've always come. They come to our long-term care facilities, and I, I just don't think it would be fair to leave it on this floor that there was ever any attempt by the committee to disrespect council. That was not, was an absence of policy and people trying to get a grant program up and running, which has been very successful, and the policy development came after the fact through the changeover of management. So there was no intention to disrespect. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Napper?
Thank you very much, Warden Weaver. How does one become a member of this? I know we have a gentleman that wants to retire. Who appoints him? Like, I don't know a lot of these people. It seems to me it's pretty well loaded up with council members. It's been there forever and a day, and two or three people that, from the public. How do you get on there? Does my council make a recommendation? I know Mr. Poland wants off, and he was a good member. Does that mean we appoint them, or do you just pick anybody?
I believe the county councils are appointed by the quadrant committees. And if you're in your quadrant, you want to sit on that. That's, I'm seeing head shake. That's how the county councils got on there, and I think the others were advertised, interested people, to sit on the committee. Counselor McDougal?
Two Counselors Nappers question about the community representatives. There were the council representatives and the community representatives. And the community representatives were people of the community with interest in advancing culture and cultural expressions in the county of Lampton. Don Poland, who I know you're speaking about, was there, is there, representing the history, the heritage preservation, and his long interest in, in history as a vibrant expression of culture in Lampton County. To some of the other representatives, they represent theater, some represented culture in terms of restaurant and other activities. So those other sectoral representatives were to be community representatives opposite the efforts of County Council because community engagement, we understood, is what was going to grow the strength of culture from the grassroots up.
Counselor Napper, follow-up?
Yeah, just a follow-up. So what I'm hearing you say, that we made a recommendation from Platteville, I mean, council to somebody that we think would do well on there, they would take Mr. Poland's place? Or would that be open to people from Lampton shores that seems crowded out pretty good there, maybe? I don't know where they're all from, but is that the way it works? I'm not clear yet.
Item six talks on the January 23rd minutes of the appointments for the striking committee every two years. Counselor McDougal?
In the beginning, as the cultural plan was getting up and running, there was a call for applicants to come forward. There was a field of applicants. And I believe that the ultimate choices that were made came because these people were, and I hate to use this term, but champions of various sectors in the community. And it was clearly identified that probably at the time, all of the people who may have applied because of heritage or historic interest, that perhaps Don Poland came to the top. And with some of the other sectors, I know that they were also trying to get people that were attached to tourism and tourism promotion, to economic development. And there was a cross into the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership. So it was, it was an open application process back then. And there have been, till now, no replacements for the community representatives that I can recollect. But certainly as people are finished with their term, then I would suspect we'll go back out for an open call again. Because the community representatives were not so much to be area representatives, rather sectoral.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would have a motion to receive these items for information. All in favor of that? Opposed? That's carried. And I would remind everyone that there is cultural meetings in each quadrant coming up in the next four weeks for input from the areas to talk about the grants and opportunities in your community. Counselor Arnold?
Warden Weaver, is it appropriate for me to bring forward my motion to ask for a report brought to the AM Committee in regards to the terms of reference and any proposed changes for the Lampton Creative County Committee at this time?
If you're making that a motion, I'll see if there's a seconder.
I will make that a motion, sir.
Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Bushy? Any questions regarding that? All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to committee minutes, the AM Committee minutes. I would ask that Chair Counselor Gillis to present these minutes for our consideration.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of County Council. The Infrastructure and Development Services, Public Health Services, and Cultural Services Committee met on August 17th. We had a robust discussion, and I present these minutes for your consideration.
Thank you. Infrastructure and Development Service, item one, correspondence received and filed. Item two, information reports received. Counselor Napper?
Just a question on item D in that, the temporary truck report. You were going to come back with a report to us where that traffic was going to go and maybe conduct some of the municipalities that those trucks were going to go through. And I heard on the radio that construction is starting today, and I'm wondering where we're at and how the meetings went with my council or my work superintendents on that.
Any updates?
Through you, Mr. Warden. What my recollection from that meeting was that the construction was going to begin before another report was, was going to be available. But we did commit to having, reaching out and requesting a contact to the other municipalities. And we did that with the project coordinators of that, of that project. It's not a county project, and we were acting as a stakeholder, just like many other stakeholders in that respect. We did do that, and I'm afraid I don't, I wasn't involved in those subsequent discussions. So whether or not, whether or not the staff was contacted at your municipality or not, I cannot confirm that at this time.
Maybe we can get a follow-up for Counselor Napper on that.
Yep. And, sorry, as far as the, as far as the detour traffic, we, we did get confirmation that it was going to be detoured to the west. And so from Highway 21 along Lake Shore, and then, and then down Highway 30 and back out either through, back out to 21 through County Road 22 or through County Road 11 when our bridge work is done.
Okay. Anything else?
Just a follow-up. Just a follow-up. So then, we've had it pretty good out there, no truck traffic along there. And then all of a sudden, you're going to start routing all those trucks around there with the OPP? And can we get some, some good policing out there? We have some roads that could be, I call them cheater roads, that somebody could whip down. And we're quite concerned about them. And that's the only reason we wanted to talk to you folks about that. I think probably, what is it? What's the county road there? Is that Aberdine Line? You got a bridge out there now. So people won't be going down that one. So they're liable to go down Egremont Road or they're liable to go down Fisher Line or any of those things like that. And we should be made aware of all this stuff going on, I think. And it's just a courtesy more than anything. And I, you know, that's my concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
No, absolutely. These are, these are valid concerns. And, and we address them. We try to address them all the time when, when we're doing projects that are going to or have the potential to impact local municipalities. In this case, we're not the project lead. We're, we are being called upon as another stakeholder in this project. And we're trying to facilitate that as best we can. But it really isn't our role to, it isn't really our role in this, in this case to be mandating or dictating what happens. With, with the detour route, we're only offering the use of our road as a detour route. That, that concern, though, has specifically been brought up. It's one that we've heard many times as a project lead ourselves. And, and we heard in our committee meeting that that was a concern that Flint and Wyoming would have as well. It needs to be addressed, and, and it should be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Item three is the report for pedestrian crosswalks. Public health, receive and file correspondence. Item four. Number five, information reports. Number six, regarding community paramedic funding. Item seven, recommendations for cannabis legislation. Item eight, duties and responsibilities for the Board of Health. Item nine, a report of public health boards. Cultural services, item 10, the second quarter statistics for the libraries. Item 11, report for Sarnia temporary library closure. Item 12, museum second quarter statistics. Item 13, the gallery second quarter statistics. Item 14, regarding an investigation to a convention center report. Item 15, 16, and 17 are in camera. Item 18 is adjournment. Counselor Gillis.
I move that county council accept the AM Committee minutes as presented.
Seconded by Counselor Marriott. Any other questions? All in favor of that? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. We have the PM Committee minutes. Vice Chair Counselor Gilliland.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of County Council. Of the long-term care, corporate services, finance, facilities, court services, and social services, also known as the PM Committee, met in the afternoon of August 17. And I present to you this day minutes of this meeting.
Thank you. Long-term care, item one, correspondence received. Item two, information reports received. Counselor Marriott.
Just wondering, those three reports, if there's any follow-up from that coming. I'm surprised that they were just received and filed without seeing what was in the report. But is, I just wondered if, what the, if there is any follow-up.
Ms. Joris, like to?
Through you, Warden Weaver. I will be presenting a report next month. It's been a year since I've been in this position, so I'll be providing a report. And most of the items in these reports will be expanded on in that report.
Okay. Follow-up?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. So through you to Ms. Joris. So will your report, I just wondered, who, like, will your report be within just yourself? Or will it be anybody else within the organization?
But it will describe the reviews that we've done over the last year, which have included a number of people.
Okay. Thank you. Corporate services? Did I miss one? Item three, correspondence. Item four. There's one. Item three is supported by county council. And item four is receive and file. Item five, regarding the proposed standing committee for property rights council. Finances, item six. Court services, second quarter. Item seven, taxation of woodlots. And item eight, second quarter variance report. Item nine, in social services, correspondence. Item 10, regarding homelessness enumeration. Item 11, housing services. Item 12, Ontario Works caseload statistics. Item 13, rural transportation project update. Item 14, rural transportation study to be discontinued. Item 15, employment resource center review. Items 16 and 17 are in camera. Item 18, open meeting. Item 19 is adjournment. Counselor Gilliland.
Warden Weaver, I move the minutes of this day's meeting to be accepted.
Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Gillis. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Items tabled from a previous meeting. I have a notice of motion from Counselor Bushey.
I move the staff explore the possible advantages of switching to electric vehicles and report back to council. Just a simple motion.
Okay. Is there a seconder for that motion? Counselor Bozovic. Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden. Just wondering if the mover and seconder would entertain a friendly amendment. And that would be not only the advantages, but the disadvantages, so we can see a cost share. Because I think of winter driving and being stranded with an electric vehicle that ran out of juice, you know, things like that. So I'd like to see both advantages and disadvantages, please.
Is that okay with the mover and seconder? Okay. Counselor Gillis, I believe, had her hand up first.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Just to broaden that out just a little bit more and to touch on actually what Counselor Arnold is referring to. Would it be possible in the report to have a costing out of charging stations and locations as well? Because again, if we have our vehicles on the road, they can't recharge, then what do you do? So could that be incorporated in there? Or would that require a separate motion?
It would have to be an all-encompassing report.
Okay, thank you.
The report's asking for an open-ended report.
Thank you.
Counselor Napper.
Hey, Mr. Weber. How many vehicles we have? You wouldn't put your dump trucks on electricity, would you? Like, we don't. How many vehicles would this involve?
Through you, Warden Weaver.
Yes.
That's a good question. And I think my division probably holds the bulk of, of the fleet, with the exception of ambulance services. I mean, our county currently has 16 pickup trucks. The feasibility of placing those pickup trucks, they're, they're used right now for heavy roadwork and, and patrols, like winter patrols and summer patrols. They get a lot of miles on them. So there may be some options to look at, at hybrid or electric, full electric vehicles in that respect. But the, the options to convert our tandems, which are our snowplows. I haven't seen that being done in other municipalities. They have a lot of extra equipment on them. They have to run the salters. They have, we have live bottom loaders. So that, that may not be as feasible. But I don't have a statistic on, or a price on that. So we, we have 16 pickup trucks and 14 tandems that would make up the bulk of that, as well as a few auxiliary vehicles.
Counselor McDougal.
Yeah. Warden Weaver and members of county council, I think that as I was reflecting on Counselor Bushey's proposed motion, I was recalling what I had read in the Minister of the Environment Climate Change Action Plan in terms of the future of fuels and all other matters. And was imagining that such a report would not look simply at electric-powered vehicles, but there were some other options in terms of alternate fuels for some of the heavier vehicles. I know that have been thrown about in discussion about conversion of some to alternate fuels as well. I guess if you're going to do a report, maybe that future look at what other fuels beyond electricity might be also useful to look at at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor to look at options for electrics. I guess it's the simple wording of it. It's what are, what are our options available? It's not the true wording. Counselor Napper.
Just a simple little question, Warden Weber. How much are costs of these reports?
Who would like to comment on that? Depends how much staff time is involved.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Of course, every report is different. Some of these things, we have, we have our thumb on the pulse of the changing times. Some of them, we don't. It strongly depends on the research and the nature involved, what we've seen done in other municipalities. I will tell you, for, for the scope of what's been proposed on the, on the floor today, I would, I would assume that there would be significant time invested in firstly examining the options that are out there for a broad range of different pieces of equipment. And, and then also to examine the scope of our purchasing abilities within our, within our group purchasing power to look at facilitating what kinds of long-term needs are there for, for both alternative fuels and for, for electric vehicles. I, you know, a report of this nature could take several staff members a couple of weeks to put together in, in, in time, in addition to their other duties.
Counselor Marriott.
As I've been reflecting, thank you, Warden Weaver. As I reflect on this with, I thought of it even before Mr. Cole made his comments. But because of the large vehicles that we do have, I believe that staff has a lot more important issues they should be spending their time on. Because it's not like we have all these small cars that, and even the cost of them is quite prohibitive right now. So I, I will be voting against this just because I think staff needs their time focused on more important issues.
Okay. Counselor Bushey, your motion, you speak to it.
I just knew that we are with two minds on, on this electric cars. And that's why I asked for, for a report. I'd just like to say, some committee, some communities already passed a motion. Large cities and small committees as well. Huron County, for example. They passed a motion to explore this. And I have the report in front of me here. I could make it available to them. One of the, the mayor of that, of Huron Committee, Huron County said, I think that Volvo, for example, they were only going to produce electric and hybrid cars in the future. And it is the way the industry is going. I, I think if, if that technology takes off, and would be nice to be ready. I mean, it's, the cars, there are cars on the, on the road. There are trucks on the road, electric cars. And I, I don't think it hurts to, to have a report so we know where we are.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Gillis.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of county council. I, I agree with Counselor Bushey. You have to be, you have to be considering what's going to happen in the future. And also, you have to prepare for that transition when it comes. It may not be in our lifetime. But for the full transition to happen. But it's going to happen. And for us to be caught flat-footed is not the best. Also, with governments taking on a leading role when it comes to subsidization, there may be an opportunity there that we don't want to miss. So I think it's good to explore it. Yes, it might take a little time. But I think it's a good opportunity for us to explore it and find out what our options are. And then, as we come around to budget, we may want to factor that in. Without a report, we have absolutely nothing. So I think Counselor Bushey is just being proactive. We're trying to consider what the future is going to bring to us because we know it's already here. And to do nothing, to me, would be a lack of vision. And I know that county council have been great visionaries in the past. So I think that this is an opportunity to do it again.
Counselor Bozovic.
We cannot isolate ourselves from the rest of the world. The progress is happening. We can close our eyes. Report or no report, the staff has responsibility to look at this option. They're going to spend the time on it anyway to, to see whether they, there is a merit to implement some of those things here. So, so this criticism of costs and so on, it's totally invalid. The, the staff has the responsibility to look at the technical progress around the world. We cannot sort of close ourselves in our little cocoon and, and be happy. I'm supportive of the motion. It is something that should be part of due diligence. And I, I don't know how anybody could actually oppose that. It, it is part of our work to manage our assets the best way we can. And implementing this alternative transportation means, electric or otherwise, maybe even autonomous cars as well. We know that, that's coming through. It, it's part of our job to do, to manage our committee in a responsible, rational way. And it cannot be ignored. So it has to be done anyway, a report or no report.
Counselor Case and Counsel Marriott.
Yes, I, through you, Mr. Warden. I guess maybe if we're looking at trying to be more environmentally friendly here at the, at the county of Lampton, I think we should also consider natural gas. I'm chair of the Blue Water Recycling Association, and we've now almost have our entire fleet turned over to natural gas vehicles. It is, it is cheaper to run it on natural gas, more efficient. There's savings to be had. So I think, I mean, I think it's good for us to take a look at trying to be more environmentally friendly. But again, at the same time, if we're going to be looking at this, not to try to, to make this into a bigger project than what it needs to be as far as the report goes, I think we should be looking at natural gas as well and considering it. Because again, like I say, at the, at the Blue Water Recycling Organization, we have a, we have a huge fleet. And we've almost got all of our vehicles turned over to natural gas now. I mean, I think we're 90, 90% there. And it's working well for us. We're saving, and it also burns cleaner. And being that we're in the business of recycling, an environmentally friendly thing to do, we thought it was very important for us to take responsibility and try to do a better job. So not to try to add to the pile while doing this report, but I think it's, I think it's good for us to consider those things as well. If we're going to be looking, after all, you know, when it comes to natural gas, I mean, it's proven that it cleans burners. So just, it cleans much more efficiently. So just my point, Mr. Warden.
Okay. Counselor Marriott was next. Councillor Marriott was next.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. And I just want to reemphasize that the technology is not in heavier vehicles, and we don't have that many small vehicles. So that's how I just, you know, I don't see that much time on a report. And I do agree with Councillor Case that natural gas would be much more sensible with the larger vehicles. But I would like to actually add that if Councillor Bushy has a report from Huron County, why don't we look at that before we send staff into doing another report?
Okay. Councillor Napper.
Oh, thank you very much. That was going to be my question. I went into my office the other day, and staff told me they got 365 reports they got mandated to do. And I'm not sure all of council understands how many staff reports that we rely on these people to do. But, and I've heard three different times now that Huron County's doing it, why don't we just read Huron County's first and, you know, share with our neighbors? We don't all have to reinvent the wheel.
Thank you. Councillor Bradley.
Perhaps you could have the staff report, on the cost of staff reports. I'm being a bit facetious, but not totally. We discussed that many years ago at Sarnia Council about, it's very easy for someone to move second, I'm not disagreeing with this direction, but we don't scope it down, like, is it a A level? Is it just a high level? Come back to us and say, look, we've looked at a few other communities, this is where they're at, this is what we need to maybe consider for the future. But it is, you know, because it's, it does launch, like, you know, and, you know, we've heard it here many times, when people will criticize staff for the report not being complete, except they're sent out there without a really, a good prescription of what they're supposed to bring back. And so, I mean, I do support this motion, and I think the natural gas option should be there, but I would see that as part of, you know, at a certain high level, come back to us, and then we can say to you, and I will use the charging station thing, that's an implementation strategy. And just, let's just look at what's going on across Ontario, across the country, and, you know, around the world, at a high level, and at the next committee level, we could discuss that, and then decide how deep we want to go and send you off to explore things that are reasonable to explore, not things that are simply producing a lot of work, which isn't going to help us in the, you know, in the short term, or even the medium term.
Okay. The motion that's on the floor is, I'm going to ask the clerk to read it back.
Sure, we'll give it a try here. Staff, explore the use of electric and natural gas vehicles and report back to council with respect to the advantages and disadvantages of such vehicles, as well as the cost and use of alternative fuels and charging stations for the same.
That's all-inclusive. Councillor Gillis.
Warden Weaver, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, that this report be done at a high level, because I support what Councillor Marriott is saying. I do not like to see our staff spending hours and hours of work on something that, to get the detail. So my amendment is a high-level report, perhaps on the number of vehicles, what kind of vehicles they are, the sources of fuel, and the cost of fuel. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a secondary for that amendment to have this a high level? Councillor Gillis. So we're going to vote on the amendment. Any questions on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? That motion is carried. So the original motion stands, or the original motion as amended with the report be done at a high level. All in favor of that? Opposed? That is carried. Other business. I have just a couple of dates for you. Notice is here that the Municipal, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Ontario West Municipal Conference is Friday, November the 24th, at the Best Western Lamp lighter. Also have an invitation here from Mayor Hand and council to, for the Lampton County Council's annual barbecue on October the 4th, Wednesday, October the 4th, at the Village of Point Edward. And also, I think you all received an invitation to the County Golf Day Charity Picnic. We're supporting the benefit of the Lampton, Sarnia Lampton Crime Stoppers, and that's on September the 21st. So those are our three notices I'd like to put out. Any other business? Notice of bylaws? Councillor Arnold.
Yes, Warden Weaver, and I had two things other in our business, if I may. I'm just wondering if we could have a notice sent out to each of us at County Council when there's a past county councillor passes away. Raymond White passed away a couple of weeks ago. I found out about it at the county plowing match. I didn't know about it. I'm sure that staff would know about it. I don't get all the newspapers and the information from the North Country, and maybe that's just my own not checking things close enough. And for those of you that don't know Raymond, he was part of the hiring for our CAO with myself and some others, and that was prior to amalgamation. So I know we're getting kind of long in the tooth, but, you know, there was, I think there needs to be some type of a process put in place for that, if there isn't one already.
Mr. Van Horn.
Mr. Warden, we do have a process. I didn't know that he'd passed away myself, so I don't know what happened this time around. But we do have a process for notifying and flags and gifts and all that sort of thing for the families, so.
Okay. Councillor Arnold.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and this becomes a little bit more of a difficult topic for myself, but the other day, I received an invitation in the mail to go to the Chamber of Commerce First State of the County address. And when I read through that, my impression was always that it would be my warden that would speak on behalf of the county and County Council. And I guess I was surprised to see that that wasn't the case. And I, what's relayed here in this email are things that only elected people would be able to speak to, and no staff people. So I just, I was quite surprised, actually, at it. And I don't have a problem with the warden going and representing my municipality and myself, because even if he's wrong, I'll tune him in at County Council. And that's okay, because we do that kind of stuff. So I just, you know, I put it out there for the rest of council, and maybe everybody thinks that's a great idea, but I don't. And I think there's an actual order. I get accused of micromanaging from time to time, because I overstep maybe my bounds as far as an elected person, but I think there comes a time when the warden of the county speaks for the county, and that's who speaks on my behalf.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. When we were first approached by the chamber, I wasn't approached directly, I was approached through a different, another staff member of the county. And the undertaking they, or the request was that I participate on a, with a panel of other CAOs. It was going to be a question and answer period. It wasn't to be what they're calling now a State of the Union address. It was supposed to have been a facilitated question and answer period, questions which were of a, basically an administrative nature, operational nature for the county. It wasn't, these are the plans, and this is where we want to, you know, go with councillor, this is where we want to take councillor. It wasn't going to be that kind of discussion at all. It was, they were supposed to submit questions to the people speaking, and we were to provide answers to them. It's an event not open to the public, it's only open to chamber members. They were asked, I believe, again, by staff, why they weren't dealing with council, as opposed to dealing with staff. And they said that they were trying to duplicate the success of the event, which is held annually in Port Huron, which is, or Sinclair County, where they bring in the CAOs for the different municipalities to answer, again, questions that are thrown at them by the people there. So this is, at least on the title of that, I don't know if that was, if it's morphed into something else, or if it was just poor, poorer verbiage in terms of explaining what the event is. But it's supposed to be a facilitated question and answer session with respect to, you know, things like when you're doing your budget, and what you're coming at this year, and what you're going to be next year, those types of questions, operational administrative-type things, if that helps at all.
Okay. Follow-up, Councillor Arnold.
Yes, I appreciate, Mr. Van Horn, your speaking doesn't help at all, because I will, I am not in favor. My warden speaks for this council, and in any venue. And if they want to talk to my staff one-on-one, that's a little different to the executive or whatever, and that happens, but my warden is who gives direction, and usually it's elected people that make that direction to go forward, and not staff. Staff get to make recommendations, but they are not the ones that carry the ball here. And if we've gotten to that spot, where staff is able to predict 2018 and what is going to happen in this county, then I might as well stay home. I thought I was elected to bring the people's wishes to this chamber, and the direction of this county. And if it's changed, we're the ones that have let it change, and I don't agree with it.
Thank you. Councillor Bradley.
Not know Mayor Arnold was going to raise this, but when I saw the release from the chamber, I was quite, I was quite stunned, because I think it puts the CAOs, I just want to quote to you what it says, and I don't want to put Mr. Van Horn on the spot, and maybe he hasn't seen this, but it says, you know, "Mr. Van Horn has resolved to make Lampton County a caring, growing, and innovative community." Don't dispute that. And he'll outline his top priorities for 2017-18 and the State of the County address. I just think that puts, puts the administrator, it doesn't matter if it's you, Mr. Van Horn, or whoever the administrator is, I think it puts them in a position, as Mr. Mayor Arnold says, staff propose, we decide. And again, I think it's, I was more that putting them in this position is not fair to them, as CAOs, because no matter how much you try to keep it under control in what you can speak to, you're in a format that's going to bring you into the political arena. It's a setup, it's set up now, and respect that decision. But I'm more concerned about the position that's going to put all the CAOs who are attending this into a political arena. And once you go in that arena, it's very difficult to remove yourself as a CAO.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none.
Thank you, Warden. It's moved by Councillor Broad and seconded by Councillor McCharles. That bylaw is 24, 25, 26 of 2017, as circulated, be taken as read a first and second time.
Any questions to those three bylaws? All in favor? Oh, Councillor Napper.
I have a question on B, 15B.
Yep.
The official plan. Is, and I question this to the planners, if I could through you. Are you all really confident that the maps that are provided to us by the province are the proper maps? And we ran into a problem there a while ago, where we were working off maps that weren't the proper ones. And I guess we don't have the will to maybe challenge this a little bit, but did we look into it and make sure that all the maps are up to date? Because that, once they go on that website, then they get taken off again, and you happen to pop in there and take that copy off, then you're probably working with that copy for the next two years. I don't know how that works, but I just thought a nice little challenge on this bylaw would have maybe let the planners above the planners that we deal with review their mappings and make sure that there's no more guffaws in there like that one was.
Any comment?
Through you, Mr. Warden, and I'll look to my colleagues up in the gallery, just to confirm what I'm saying is correct. But I know that did cause quite a bit of consternation with council and with the committee, the OP Review Committee that reviewed, that reviewed our, the product. We, we as staff did become concerned when, when we recognized that, we changed the mapping that we have found to be incorrect, and we will continue to do that as a normal housekeeping process, even after the OP is passed, that we will continue to review and look at this information as it is modified, to ensure that it is the most current information that we are aware of that's available.
Okay. Any other questions on the first two readings of the bylaws? All in favor? Opposed?
It also moved by Councillor McCharles and seconded by Councillor Broad. The bylaw 24, 25, 26 of 2017, as circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally
Any questions on that? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Motion to, opposed? My apologies. Motion to adjourn. Councillor Case and Councillor McDougal. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.